Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 12 Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Command Center is back here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence. Okay. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna start the meeting off with our swearing in of our new Police Chief, Michael Spalding. It was, uh, we had a very competitive process and with seventy-four top candidates and, well, candidates, and we narrowed it down to several top candidates, which came through a very thorough search process with the town, and we were very happy that Mike had rose to the top. He has previously served as a Captain and Troop Commander with the Maryland State Police, has seventeen years of experience in a command role, has been highly recommended and well-respected for his leadership, thoughtfulness, and effectiveness. He and his family are in the process of locating closer to town, hopefully, you know, get real close, but somewhere closer. And we have special appreciation to his family, especially his wife Stacy, who's here tonight, for supporting him in this transition, because I know this is a big move for your family, and we certainly appreciate that. So, um, so we're gonna welcome you and get you sworn in, so that he can keep things straight tonight at the meeting, well, maybe next meeting. And then, uh, and then at this time, I'd like to send out my appreciation, I know, and on behalf of the council and the entire town, for Sergeant Kilgore, for his service as the interim chief, because that was a pretty intensive role, and he stepped up at a critical time for the town, took on a lot of new responsibilities he probably never expected. I'm sure he was like, "What?" You know how those jobs are, and then, uh, he had a crash course in furnaces, plumbing, computer systems. And, uh, and he kept a positive attitude the whole time and was willing to do whatever was asked of him, and so we're extremely grateful for that, and he even maintained all of our law enforcement operations seamlessly, and even hired us an excellent new officer. So, and then I'd like to also recognize all the officers of the auxiliary who, who were, you know, in this process, helped us out with a lot of stuff, and always help us out with all the events and stuff. I mean, we couldn't really do all the things we do without our great auxiliary. So Captain Blair and all his team, I wanted to help him for everything he helped us with during the transition. So, without further ado, we're gonna get on with the, um, oath of office to get you sworn in. Yeah, yeah, because we've gotten better. This is my third time. First time was like, I forgot that you had to read this after me, so, um, we got a little, you know, a little quick, we forgot, so, um, I guess we should write, and we've done this informally, but now it's formal. Fortunately, it's in fourteen-point type, so I can read. I, Michael A. Spalding.
I, Michael A. Spalding.
Do swear that I.
Do swear that I.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will be.
That I will be.
Faithful.
Faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will do.
And that I will do.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of Chief of Police.
Of Chief of Police.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
All right, congratulations.
Hey, Redlich, we're very excited to have you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Redlich? Okay, and then Chief, if you'd like to come on up and introduce yourself, say a couple of words.
Well, you said "Oh," didn't you?
Mayor?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your kind words. I appreciate them very much, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank a few people, particularly my wife and my family, for being supportive of me over the years. We all know that it's very important to have support at home, and she and the rest of my family have been that for me, so I'm very, very grateful for that. Secondly, I would like to thank the mayor and town manager and the town council for your confidence in me. It's, it's, it's an honor, and I'm very humbled, and I'll do the very best that I can to, to show you you made the right choice. So I do very much appreciate your confidence, and I'm gonna work very hard to, to prove that I was the right person for the job, so thank you. And also, I'd like to thank the men of Sykesville Police Department, and in particular Sergeant Kilgore. He's been an absolute asset to me over this past week. They've all been very welcoming and made me feel very, very much at home, and that's, that's, that's quite a, quite a big deal, so I do appreciate that, and I look forward to working with them throughout the future, to see what we can do to improve things within the police department, so. And lastly, I'd like to thank the citizens of the town of Sykesville. You know, from the very beginning, from really the moment I stepped foot in this town, you guys made me feel very, very welcome and very at home. From staying at the Norwood Inn, I mean, I felt like I was, you know, sleeping in a house that I grew up in, it just felt, uh, felt like the right fit for me, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And that's because of the way everybody's treated me, and, uh, and it's, it's a good feeling, so, um, I appreciate your confidence, I'm gonna work hard, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you on a regular basis.
I'd like to go welcome you again, we're very excited. And then Chief, uh, well, former Chief, Sergeant Kilgore. Okay, and, uh, so we, we, in light of all your service in this period, we've got a certificate of appreciation from the town for your dedication and loyal service as the interim chief of police, so we wanted to give you that here. I'm gonna get a picture. Here, you can hold it.
Just the mayor.
Thank you so much, man.
Thanks, Sergeant.
Really kept things straight.
Good.
Okay, so, back to our agenda for this evening. Are there any public concerns additions to the agenda this evening? Anybody have anything? Um, did everybody get a copy of the minutes? We've got two copies for April fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. Everybody had a chance to look at those and?
Make a motion to approve the April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. Okay, uh, Public Safety Report.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight's Public Safety Report's gonna handle the dates from April the tenth to May the seventh, two thousand and fourteen. We handled a total of one hundred and sixty-one calls for service during that date. Of those one hundred and sixty-one calls for service, sixteen calls were for assist MSP, Carroll County Sheriff's Office, or Howard County PD calls. We had four calls for alarm investigations, we handled one animal bite, we had two, um, various animal complaints, we had two calls for assault, we had one assist citizen call, we had one CDS possession, which resulted in two arrests, one for a felony possession with intent to distribute, some monies were seized out of that, and then one misdemeanor arrest out of the same traffic stop. We handled one call for disorderly conduct, eighty-nine foot patrol patrol checks or crossing details, we had one call for obstruction of property, we had one medical transport or emergency petition, two calls miscellaneous, we handed one vehicle collision with property damage, we had one call for an off-road vehicle where it wasn't supposed to be, I assume, one, we, one car for an open door, one parking violation where the violator was slated appropriately, three calls for police information, one call for a public service. We handled two sudden death investigations, both of those were natural causes, we handed one suspicious person, or, I'm sorry, six suspicious person and/or vehicle calls, seven calls for theft, eight calls for traffic offenses, seven calls for violation of town ordinances, and two nine-one-one hangouts. Again, one hundred and sixty-one calls for tot- uh, total calls for service, April tenth to May seventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, I don't have any questions. I do wanna say, while we're on TV tonight, that, uh, you know, the weather's getting warmer, and I'd like everybody to kinda be mindful of the traffic situation. Of course, Chief Spalding brings to us a tremendous amount of traffic experience, being from the state police, so, uh, you know, I just wanted to, and I know it's been tough, you know, with, with, with our situation of staffing and stuff, to do enforcement, but I think that's part of what we're planning on doing, is to try to do a better job of enforcement, but better yet, if we can get people to not speed and be mindful of all the kids that are gonna be out now with, you know, getting warmer and stuff, skateboards and things pop up quick, so just wanted to kinda put that out there.
Sure, I can tell you, I'm very excited to get back on the road and write a ticket.
You're like, "Woo-hoo!" So there you go, everybody, you know, so be careful, slow down a little bit, it's only, it doesn't really save you any time, I've found. Like, it's just better to slow down, get there safe, and, uh, you know, so, wanted to put that out there, so, and then again, thank you for all of your.
My pleasure, sir.
One, one related question, and that is, could you clarify the, uh, the rule on regarding skateboards on streets?
There is no steadfast rule that dictates they can or cannot be there. Skateboard's not considered a motor vehicle by statute, and therefore, we cannot oversee sanctions based upon things such as skateboard, because it's not a motor vehicle. In order to, to be able to enforce it, it's gotta be an implement of transportation, which by law defines skateboard is not one. Bicycle is, moped is, even the segways that people drive are, but a, but a skateboard is not. So basically, we kinda have to just rely on people's courtesy to move out of the way and, and be out of traffic if we ask them to move, but we can't.
Not concerned about kids.
Yeah, we definitely can't, can't cite them for being in the roadway, it's just because they're not considered a motor vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Did he wear helmets, um, sorry?
Uh, if they're seventeen or under, is the new, I believe.
Right, so, on skateboards too?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, hi there.
Hey!
I'm Sally Holcomb, I'm the Executive Director for A-Beta Maryland, we're a motorcycle rights organization in the state. I just wanted to introduce myself to you, I also live here in Sykesville. What we do is we go around the state to make sure that motorcyclists are, um, safe, um, that they are, that awareness, public awareness is out there, it's Motorcycle Safety Month, the month of May, we just had a proclamation at the MVA from the governor for that. We have brought some signs, I believe, up to the town hall here, and over to the police department. I have many of those to put out, says Share the Road, it's our Share the Road program, and what we ask is that drivers watch for motorcyclists, because we are out there, we're out there year-round, but now's when we kinda come out the most, in May, we start coming out for the summer. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that I'm around, if you have anything, you know, that you need as far as concerns with motorcyclists, then I'm the one to contact, I'll make sure I leave a card with you, so that you have that. But we wanna work with all the towns and make sure that we're all on the same page, and make everybody aware that we're out there.
Great, well, thank you for that, I appreciate you coming out, because I, I ride a motorcycle myself, and, you know, a lot of the accidents happen with, um, you know, cars not looking. I mean, you look up the road, I do it myself, I mean, I drive a car, you look up the road, you don't see a car, you pull out, you know, so, and especially when it gets warmer, it's nice to do a double take and look for the, you know, the smaller vehicles and make sure they're not there, especially when it's warming up, so.
Absolutely.
That goes along with what we're talking about, so yeah, thanks for coming out.
Yeah, can you send us your info?
Yeah.
Y'all have monthly meetings, quarterly meetings? What do y'all do?
Sure, sure. We have chapters throughout this state, we have chapters in almost every county in the state, we are nationwide, there are motorcycle rights organizations throughout this country, there are many of us, and we coincide with Motorcycle Riders Foundation, which is on a national level. They lobby in Washington DC, and I lobby in Annapolis for anything motorcycle-related. My husband is the MRF Director or the Rep for the state of Maryland, so we're both very active in motorcycle rights and awareness, that's why we wanted to make sure the town was aware that we're here, we're here to help you with anything motorcycle-related. And I will make sure you get my card and all the information.
Y'all, y'all have quarterly meetings or anything, or just sort of?
We have, um, once a month, we have a chapter meeting, lots of rides. We have a chapter meeting, um, here in Carroll County, up at Cedar Brothers, the first Wednesday of every month.
Sure.
Any motorcyclist in this state can be a member of A-Beta Maryland. We suggest that you become a member of A-Beta Maryland, because what that does is that helps us pay for our lobbyists, we have a paid lobbyist in, um, Annapolis, we also have a paid lobbyist in Washington DC on the MRF level. So all motorcyclists should be aware, we work with law enforcement, we just had that big press release, I don't know if you saw us on television, when we were on over thirteen, twelve, I mean, eleven, Channel Two, and we did that on Wednesday, and that was at Interwood County Police Department. So we do work with law enforcement to make sure that the law enforcement side understands what's happening in the motorcycle community, and we understand, you know, where their problems are too, so, yes, we do have meetings, we have them every month, but every chapter has them.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, so I think that's it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thanks again for all of your service. Treasures Report, does anybody have a chance to review the Treasures Report?
Yes, sir.
Did you have any questions?
Good, Julia, you go. Come on, Julia.
No, I always send them to Linda ahead of time.
Oh, okay, good, that's awesome.
I'm good.
You're good.
Comments on the Treasures Report?
Make a motion to accept that. Make a motion to approve the March Treasures Report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? March Treasures Report is approved, thank you.
Who seconded the motion?
Al. And then, um, before we get to the committee reports, I think, is, is it Kathy Allison is here, are you running for District Five, County Commissioner?
Yes, sir, indeed I am.
Yeah, would you like to come on? I didn't wanna have you waiting through the whole meeting, if you wanted to say a few words and introduce yourself.
Thank you for this moment.
Yeah.
I am Kathy Allison, and I'm running for Commissioner District Five, just dropped by to say hello, I won't take your precious time with any campaign stuff other than I'm running, and I'm certainly available for any questions after the meeting, if anybody'd like to visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna, if you were, you know, I didn't know how long you're gonna be here, so.
How long is it?
Did you want to do your appointment before?
Um, well, no, that's coming up in the business, it's gotta be business. So, Council Committee Reports, we'll start down with you, Anna.
We'll start with me, person rec. We didn't have a meeting since our last council meeting, we had scheduled the Saturday, movies in the park, we were going to show How to Train Your Dragon, but due to the weather, we canceled it, that is going to be on our, um, alternate page, it's gonna be September thirteenth. Our next council meeting will be Thursday, May the twenty-second, we're at the townhouse at seven o'clock, and our next movie in the park is scheduled for July the four- uh, June the fourteenth, I'm sorry, for Despicable Me, over at Cooper Manor Park, no, no, Cooper Park, sorry, Cooper Park.
Yeah, will the thirteenth be over at, simply Cooper also?
All season, it's gonna be at Cooper, with the Ordoings at South Branch, we're moving it to Cooper Park.
Okay.
So it's come now, if you've tried to plan your weekends, and you're wondering if it's gonna rain, just look at this calendar, and if you see the movie night.
It's gonna rain.
You can pretty much count on that's gonna be a rain night, you know what I mean? So we've had a tremendous good luck predicting rain with the movie in the.
Stop, you're jinxing it.
No, I'm breaking the hex.
So that was a good move, canceling that, by the way, I'm glad you guys did that early. The promotion and organization.
One, one quick thing, Al, before we move on, so I did have one, um, in, in light of our Heal Healthy Cities Campaign, I just wanted to mention to you that, um, the, they're trying to do a walking event on your next movie, so is that gonna be on the seventeenth, you said?
June fourteenth.
June fourteenth, I'm sorry. So on that evening, um, they would like to, from four to six, maybe plan a walk through Main Street, and I thought it may help the movie, if people, hey, know there's a movie up there, so I'll talk to you more about it, I just wanted to kinda bring it up before I forget. Um, and then I didn't know about maybe auxiliary and stuff, if we're gonna need some help with, um, that, so I wanted to put that out as early as I could.
June fourteenth.
June fourteenth, is what they were shooting for, yes, and maybe we'll talk to them and see if there's, and then see what your thoughts on, that's what I told them, it's fun to plan an event, but you really gotta check with people that are gonna be involved in these things, so, wanted to just put it out early and put it on your radar, and then, okay, Al.
Uh, the Promotion Organization Committee met Wednesday before the Wine Festival, I'll let Leo take over on the Wine Festival, our next meeting will be Wednesday, June fourth, seven o'clock, right here.
Okay, thanks.
Planning Commission met on May fifth, unfortunately, I missed the meeting, so, um, maybe Dawn could fill in, but I'll, um, we just, what was discussed was the Carroll County Draft two thousand and thirteen Annual Planning Report, um, and we reviewed and commented on the Carroll two thousand and thirty project, and I believe both of those things are still on the plate for the next meeting, which will be June second.
Correct, and then a, a few updates were provided in terms of the Warfield Project and the program Open Space update, so I think those were the two main additions.
Okay.
Good, and then the Sykesville Military Memorial, Dawn was able to corral people enough, we had a meeting Friday evening, um, go ahead, you can give us the update on them.
You go ahead.
So, um, so we're in the process of getting ready to order the bricks, and also the star, the marble star, we had Dean Pennington, who was gonna be the installer, I guess, and, and really coordinating most of everything too, he was out laying out everything and looking at things too, so, um, we're right at the last stages of getting things rolling. It'll probably take four to six weeks, once we order certain things, but, uh, but we're, we're right towards the end.
So the brick's over, no more bricks, I gotta get those order forms too.
We'll still take a couple of bricks, we'll still take a couple of days for bricks.
So last call for the bricks.
Right.
So you should buy the bricks now, get your name out forever, it'll be, and then it's for Military Memorial, which will be, where it's pretty exciting, so.
Right. Everything looks good. And then, also on the parking, it looks like Ivy and I will be working on a parking issue, and we'll know more about that in the future.
Great, all right, good, that's awesome, yes, we're putting together the Parking Task Force, that's great.
Last time I, I.
Oh, yeah, you passed, yeah. Okay, so Warfield, um, the Warfield Board did not meet, um, we have had some meetings, informal meetings with different parties regarding the Warfield contract and our next steps with the, the county and the State Department of Mental Hygiene and things, so we're still working on some of those details of things, and of course, the zoning issues will be coming up with changing things that Dawn mentioned, so that's kinda all of the progress on that right now.
Okay, um, the Historic District Commission has not met since our last Mayor and Town Council meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for seven PM on the twenty-eighth, which is a Wednesday, um, normally meet on the fourth Tuesday, but that is the date of our Town Council meeting, because of Memorial Day being on Monday, the twenty-sixth. And I will have a monthly report for the Colored Schoolhouse and the Gate House Museum at our next meeting.
Okay. Uh, Main Street, we had our board meeting on May sixth, and the majority of that time we spent rehashing the Art and Wine Festival, which was a huge success, um, a lot of people probably heard, we ordered a thousand wine glasses, we ran out in an hour and a half, many more people than we could've anticipated being there. So, we're already in the planning stages for next year, because it's gonna have to be bigger, it's gonna have to be more volunteers, um, a little more organized parking and those sorts of things, but, um, every year has been growing, every year we've been learning, so it's been exciting, but it's, it's, I'm impressed with the amount of people we had come out.
We didn't turn people away after an hour and a half.
No, no, we didn't turn.
We just didn't have any nice glass glasses left.
Right, right, we converted to plastic cups and cut the price in half, and, uh, some people weren't happy about no wine glasses, but, but everybody had a good time, good weather. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Carter and Betts and Link for being there all day from nine AM till well after close, for helping set up and clean up and man the booth and everything else, you guys were great, I really appreciate it.
Thank you too, Leo.
How many, how many attendees you think you had?
Um, probably, I wanna say thirty-five hundred to four thousand.
Wow, right, wow, that's awesome.
Now, we're still waiting on the final numbers, I'll have that next meeting.
Okay.
For the dollars.
Great, yeah, and, and again, I wanted to, I wasn't worried you have a thank you for my service there, because I was.
Oh, you were just glad handing all day.
Right, I was just, I was just promoting, so, uh, didn't do any work, but, uh, but we had a great time, we had a lot of people out, and, and again, wanted to thank all the people who helped out, because these events wouldn't be possible without all the different people that have helped out, and it really says something about our town that I'm really proud of, because there's a lot of people that don't get recognized, you know, and I wanna commend the board for having their meeting, I did sit in on that to, to kinda, what we learned, you know, and to take the suggestions from the auxiliary, you know, to, to, so that we may make sure we're addressing their concerns next year, you know, and making sure we have a better event, and we can do bigger events, you know, so, again, I just wanted to thank everybody, the people that, the ones behind the scenes often are the ones that do a lot of the work, and the businesses that stepped up and, uh, you know, had extra stuff and did the drawings, and I just think it made it a fantastic event, I think everybody I've talked to had a blast, so, thanks again.
And big credit to Ivy on another.
Yeah, and Ivy, of course, yeah, so for all her work, you can't, can't say enough, everybody, the, the wineries were very happy, I think they were a little overwhelmed by the success of it too, so they, they're gonna come better prepared next year, and hopefully, like Leo said, they'll, we'll figure out new ways to make things run smoother, so, but it was, it was a great event, so, thank you for everybody for that.
Do you want me to give a report on Brandonburg Circle?
Yeah, let's do that real quick, so we're getting into our, our next segment here, so, quick update, I don't know if everybody's aware, but there's been a, a hole opened up at Dick's House, right out in front of your house.
It's in the road.
Right, right.
And we wanna keep it there.
In the road, right, we wanna keep it before it gets to your house, so, in the road down on Brandonburg Circle, we had a area opened up that Dawn and I think our Public Works Director found while we were assessing the overall condition of the streets after the harsh winter, um, they noticed this hole, and, and out of abundance of caution, we wanted to make sure that, you know, there wasn't something major going on, so we had to close that piece of road while we got it checked out, so, from there, I'll let Dawn take that.
So, based on some preliminary information we got, we determined we'd like to check the structural soundness of the road underneath, and to do that, the easiest way is to send a camera down the storm drain. Unfortunately, the camera's been in repair, and it's, I'm told it is now on its way back to Carroll County, and Carroll County has generously offered to help us scope the storm drain once it gets back into town.
So, just wanted to kinda give everybody an update on that, because we have had some questions about when it's gonna get gone, and so we're hoping as soon as we can get that camera to look at it, then we'll be able to better assess what the needs are for the repair, because we don't wanna have to open it up and then get a big surprise.
If you don't mind, I'll pass that information on to the mailman and FedEx.
Yes!
And all the other delivery people who can't use that road anymore.
Great, thank you, we'd appreciate that, and all the neighbors too, so that.
The neighbors have been asking me for updates, like, "Why, now I have an update."
There you go, thank you so much for that, we do appreciate that. Okay, so announcements for this evening, on Monday, May twenty-sixth, the town offices will be closed for Memorial Day, so we will be having our Town Council meeting, um, that Tuesday, our regularly scheduled Town Council meeting will be moved to Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. The Historic District Commission, as Councilwoman Link had mentioned, will be moved to Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, as a result of that as well. So for our business tonight, um, our first order of business is the appointment of a Board of Zoning Appeals, a BZA alternate, um, and I'm recommending that we appoint Richard E. Berry, who's a recommendation from Council President Frank Robertson, and we did have one other person that expressed interest, but, uh, really, after they thought about it, it probably was too much for them, so, um, so he's generously agreed to step up, um, so we certainly appreciate that, so.
Just wanted to stand up, recognize.
Yeah, would you like to, he's here tonight, so.
Have they got sworn in, Tim?
We just sworn, sworn in, not sworn at, that was a big thing.
Sworn at, right, right, right.
Pick up with the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rich, for doing this.
Yeah, thank you so much, it's a very important job, and, and he's excited about doing it, so, yeah, do we need a motion to?
I think we do, and I would like to move that we appoint Rich Berry.
All right, so there's, we got a motion, right, from? All right, so there, we got a motion, right, from?
A little bit more to it, I think.
Okay, well, let's do it.
Do the formal motion.
We'll do the whole thing then, okay.
Do you want me to make it?
That's what happens. I got it here. That's good.
Give me a second, and then after he's done, and then.
Tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Are you ready? If an agreement, a motion to appoint Richard Berry as an alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeals with an expiration date of May thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Here are four of the zoning appeals alternate. Thank you so much, again, for stepping up for that.
Very important committee. Thank you.
It is, it's a. Okay, our next order of business is the Historic Tax Credit and Historic District Grant for Seventy-six Twenty-five Miller Avenue. Councilmember Link, Dawn will be giving us all the details on that.
Okay. So as far as I know, this is the first request for a historic tax credit from the town. So this could be a historic moment.
For the cameras. Great.
So our code allows for the town council to grant a tax credit for work that's done in, on, in the Historic District. Michael and Sharon Johnston, Michael is here, redid a garage, replaced an existing garage on their property and followed the guidelines that were provided by the Historic District Commission. The Commission has reviewed the application and has confirmed that the work qualifies to meet the tax credit and recommend actually that the council approve, approve this. So basically what it means, it's a five percent tax credit, so five percent of the work, if, is that it's approved by all of you, and the amount of the work was sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, will then be credited to their tax bill, starting the next tax year, as long as it, and then if it exceeds their tax bill, it will carry over for up to five years. So that's part one, and we'll talk about the grant as part two. But I'll let you do the tax credit first. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, it pretty much sums it up. Really nothing to add, except that the fam, that Mr. and Mrs. Johnson followed everything to a T and made it as painless as possible for the Historic District Commission to review their application and did so in a timely fashion, so.
Great. And that's no small feat. So, thank you.
So, did they, did they come forward by themselves to just, really?
Yes.
This is the first time it's?
To my knowledge and to Dawn's knowledge and to Janice's knowledge, yes.
It's great. So, and then there's a grant part of it too. Did you want to talk about that, or?
Yeah, do you want to take, do?
Later in?
No, we'll do that next, but do the motion about the tax.
Okay, the motion's on the floor. Sit right.
Well, if somebody has to make.
Nobody's made a motion yet.
No one's made it yet.
I heard Stacy.
Yes, I make a motion to accept, or I guess the verbiage would be, let me pull this up here, so I don't screw this up.
I can give it to you here.
Please do.
Yes.
So before you make a motion, Dawn, I was looking here, and you said that they think the definition of what constitutes a tax credit should be clarified a little bit. Would the, would the HTC be making that? Or is that something different?
Well, it's, it's the grant. I think the definition of something, the hardship part of it should be better clarified. But in terms of the tax credit, I think it's pretty well spelled out.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the five percent historic tax credit for Seventy-six Twenty-five Miller Ave.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations. Got the tax credit. So, it's a historic event. Like you said, you're setting the thing up now. Everybody's going to be redoing stuff. And then, the next thing is the, so the next part is the grant.
Correct, right. So, the Historic District Commission also has the ability to award grants for projects that there's a demonstrated hardship to help, to help support that project. And the Johnsons have applied for the grant. The Historic District Commission has recommended that they be approved for a grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. However, the hardship that they expressed was just that the materials that were required were more expensive to meet Historic District guidelines. So, I'm a little concerned that this sets a precedent that most projects in the Historic District would then be considered a hardship. And so, everybody would be eligible for this grant. So, one, I guess you all have to decide whether you would like to approve this grant now or defer a decision. And then my suggestion is to recommend that the Historic District Commission better clarify what a hardship means and what the grant process will be to have a, have, in the future, have a better plan. So you could either approve this grant now and ask the Historic District Commission to better, to create a better definition, or defer this decision until that happens.
What, did the Historic District Commission have a recommendation?
No, we actually discussed the fact that, that a hardship could be determined here. And I, I'm not sure that it was actually realized at that time, that it could present a precedent issue. And that obviously, there's a limit to the amount of funding available for a grant, and many homeowners within the Historic District. So, I think it's probable that we should meet and discuss at least that portion of things again. And perhaps also more clearly define the hardship as, as it is written in our, in our guidelines now. I'm not sure that it's, it's, it's quite vague, actually. So, I actually would prefer that the Historic District Commission's given another opportunity to discuss the, that portion of things a little bit more, as far as the determination of a hardship versus not. Because as Dawn, as Dawn mentioned, it is something that everyone that is following Historic District guidelines, you know, more than likely, the materials required to meet those guidelines are more costly than, than any other alternative. So, it's kind of inherent.
I have a question. Where do those funds come from? What, where in the budget?
There is a line item for Historic District Grants. However, we fund, well, we, we, there's seven hundred and fifty dollars in that each year, so far.
So if we use it, then we're done with the budget, I mean, obviously. But we might, if, if the Historic District changes or defines the definition, then in the future, we're going to have to look in funding that line item more.
Either that, or it's discussed as to, you know, obviously, there would maybe need to be a maximum number of grants offered per year, per calendar year, or that, those are the kinds of things we need to visit. Because this is the first time this has, to my knowledge, been up for discussion, as far as the grant is concerned.
So I tend to agree. I tend to agree that, you know, the, the funds available should be kind of looked at closer, because they will be limited. So we want to make sure that it's a true hardship. You'd hate to have somebody come by that just absolutely didn't have the money to do something and needed to do it. And then that's a hardship versus not just a cost of the material, so. I am going to def.
Yeah, you want me to make, I'll make a motion to defer.
Yeah.
To defer the seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Johnsons and to have the Historic District Commission take a look at what exactly a hardship constitutes. Maybe give us some guidelines or recommendations.
Certainly.
Okay, did you get that?
He just made that.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Well, are you?
Yes, he did.
Did you have a motion to make the grant?
Motion to defer it.
Well, there was, there was.
He's saying that there's no motion to defer.
But I didn't think we needed a motion, so, yeah.
Sorry about that.
But it might be good to give the guidance, somehow to give guidance to the Commission, so.
Well, that's what I think when we can, can we do that with just saying, basically what Al said, to take that back to the committee and give us direction of how, what are, what's considered a hardship, I guess.
But he wants it in the minutes, so that it's easier for the committee. That'll probably help you.
I'll carry that message back to the Commission at our meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so is that a better way to do that?
So we can put it in the minutes, just not as a motion.
Right. Okay.
So is the hardship defined in the town code?
The, the words of the town code are hardship has to be determined by the Commission.
Okay.
The Commission has not set parameters for what a hardship is.
So that's what needs to be accomplished prior to.
The tax credit may be hardship. I don't know yet.
No, the tax, the tax grant.
The grant.
Grant.
The tax credit we agreed on, so.
No, so I said tax credit, but we're not sure about the grant.
So would we get a say on the hardship? Like if Stacy goes back and they say, hey, this is what we come up with? Does that, does that need to be approved by us?
The code, the code says it's determined by the Commission.
Right. So the answer would be no.
But it would need to be approved, I guess, by, right?
Well, only if there's a, an amendment to the code. But if the procedures are set up by the Commission, you actually wouldn't. But if you would like to give some input now, it might be good to make any comments, so Stacy can take it back to the Commission.
Yeah, I really haven't thought about it. I was just wondering what they're going to come up with. Just want, I just want to be in the loop, I guess.
I have faith in you to define hardship.
Well, thank you.
I think they'll, they'll define it, I mean.
So if anybody has any comments, just get them to Stacy before the next meeting.
Twenty-eighth.
For the twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Get an extra day. Okay. All right, so, our next item on the agenda is ordinance number two eighty-seven. And that is the adoption of the fiscal twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen.
We actually were going to switch the order a little bit.
Oh, we switched, I'm sorry. Did I miss that one?
Yeah.
We had a change. Okay, so, all right, got it. Authorization to fund the survey of the girls' shelter property is what we moved up into that. So I do apologize for the switch. And Dawn's going to give us an update, and so.
So, it's just come to my attention that we have another public concern that was not raised earlier. So I don't know if you want to address the public.
Let's do this real quick, since we're on to this. You want to do the girls' shelter thing, and then we'll get to that next. How's that?
Okay.
Let's do that, since we were on that, and then we'll, we'll do that next public concern.
All right, all right. So, forget everything that, that you, I previously said about this, on this subject. And we'll start all over.
That's okay, I remember that.
And this is in reference to the girls' shelter property.
Right, which is next to the Gate House Museum and across from Cooper Park. So, the, this Department of Juvenile Services has expressed interest in surplusing the property. The town has expressed interest in the state donating it to us. And initially, I was told that the town, because the title, it's a very old piece of property, so there is no title or no deed. The town was originally asked to do the property survey and do the deed. But it came to my attention late last week that the state is actually working on the deed and the property survey. So the town won't have to do that part. But I do have an update on the process, and there is a part that the town may have to do. So, I'll let you know what that is. But tonight, I'm not going to ask for authorization of any funds until we have more information. So, according to the state, their contractor is expected to complete the property survey by the mid to end of June. Then, this request needs to go to the Board of Public Works two times. So the first time is to declare the properties as surplus. So they're going to try and do that by July. Then, we have to get two appraisals of the property. So, the, and it could be that the Department of Juvenile Services will ask the town to pay for those appraisals. But I've asked them to consider at least sharing, if not helping to pick up the cost of the appraisals. And unfortunately, because we were originally told to complete a property survey, I had contacted a company to do initial work, and they have done about nine hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of work already. So, so I'd like to ask the state to take that into account, in terms of requesting that we do the appraisals at a minimum, to help with that. So we do the appraisals. That could take, as we know, it could take four to six weeks. Then, there also has to be a, a notification letter that goes out for forty-five days for comment. So we'll figure we get that done in early August with the hope of getting our final approval from the Board of Public Works to transfer the property by the end of October. So I told them that we'd like to try and get this completed by the election.
Good. I think that's paramount. We're going to need to get that finished up, maybe a little bit sooner. And I think the appraisals can get done a little bit sooner, so.
Good.
Yeah.
So it just depends on the property. And actually, I am going to, just talking through this, I am going to actually, because the survey company has already done a certain amount of work, I do think it would be better for us to take action now, so that I can deal with that company and resolve those issues. And then it'll just be for us to work out the issues with the state. So, rather than ask for approval for twenty-eight hundred dollars for a property survey, I'd like to ask for approval for nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for the, I guess, the prep work.
This is the survey prep work that we started.
Right, and with the funding to, funds to come out of, I think I said the impact fee, you know.
Balance, signed balance.
Sons from the assigned balance.
Okay, so did you want to make that motion, or?
So, a motion that we can take the nine hundred and twenty-five dollars out from the impact fee to pay for the parts that's been done so far, as part of the prep work for the house.
The girls' shelter property.
Girls' shelter property, right.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
There was a question, in fact.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris?
What are you guys going to do with the house?
Don't know, wait till we get it.
Well, we're waiting to get surveys too, and see what the, what the, what the stuff comes up with the environmental.
I understand that the foundation of the house is cracked and.
Yeah.
We heard lots of rumors.
I don't think we're anticipating using it as a house or a building.
I mean, then we have to incur the costs of demolishing it and.
Yep. We've been in there. We've decided that it's better to, just if we have to knock it down, knock it down and let somebody else come in and, you know, buy it from the state and have to deal with whatever they're planning on putting in there.
Right. Potential extra parking for the park. We're just a whole bunch, no, we haven't even got to that point yet, but yeah. We're thinking it's probably just better to have it, since it's, yeah.
Wait till it's all wrapped up, though.
One aside note with that property, since the state still officially owns it, are they still going to maintain it? Because I know that the grass needed cutting.
They should be maintaining it at this point. Yeah, so I'll check with them about that.
Since the next time is going to be in the budget, are you guys budgeting, or budgeting money for that for next fiscal year? Or is that going to be a mid-year adjustment?
It would be a mid-year adjustment.
Yeah, because we really don't know yet what's going to happen. And I know they're doing like a survey, the state is, to give us kind of a condition and where that's going to be, so we can kind of figure that out. At least a little bit better.
Yeah, there's been no discussion really what to do with the building, I don't think.
No.
No resolution.
No resolution, I think, like that.
Okay, so now, we're going to squeeze in the other, what was the other public concern?
I brought to your, your guys notice about the tree issue I had in town, and I left you information packets. I haven't heard anything back. In the meantime, I've also found the town's cycle's charter. There's actually something in there about the trees and about the town's responsibility of keeping stuff out of the right way. All the town is writing the charter. And I just wanted to give you guys a copy of that and ask if maybe we could get something done with these trees sooner than later. Like this is coming up one year.
So, I, I can respond, I guess. We did receive the letter that you sent, and we've given it.
That's, that's an addition as well, but that, you got, the letter was in, because you guys said there was no ordinance, there was nothing in your guys statute about trees. And I did find something that said there is. So, and it, and it states right there, it says, I'm going to read it. To regulate the control of planting, trimming, destroying, or removal of bushes of the broken, fallen parts in or upon from any public way of the town. So a road is a public way, a fence.
That basically gives us the power, but.
Right, the charter outlines the powers we have. That's not an ordinance.
Right.
Well, I, I exercise the power to make sure clear the roads, so I can drive my vehicle down the road.
That's a decision we would have to make.
Right, that's, that's, just like what Councilwoman Betts is saying. So we would have to create an ordinance. And we've looked at that. This has been part of that process. I mean.
I just, I just, you know, I asked that I could maybe be kept in the loop. Like I said, this is, you know, this has been going on for, coming up on a year. And I'm just, I'd like to know, have some sort of an update on it.
Didn't we get a letter from, you hired an attorney, right?
Yes.
So, now that you've got an attorney, we have to deal with your attorney.
Well, you, you guys haven't even responded. There was a ten-day response.
Our counsel's right behind you too. We've talked with him in the last meeting. We'll address that.
Thank you.
We have to, but we now have, we can't now address you with this. We have to address your attorney.
That's kind of what happened. That actually, kind of, in a way, it slows things up. I mean, I know it may speed things up eventually, but it slows things up in the process, because then you're kind of dealing with it. But then you've got another layer to deal with. So, we are working on it, though. I mean, we are looking at the different things. We haven't, we're not, you know, we are definitely working on it, and we're going to have. we're not, you know, we are definitely working on it and we're gonna have some response to it and then try to work out a solution for it. So, this, I mean, that's probably it for tonight, I would think, but we are working on it, and we will keep you posted. I mean, I'm sure Dawn will be getting back with his. Okay, so now, we're back to approval of the, or ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance number two eighty-seven, and this is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen budget and tax rate for the town. So, after extensive work on this budget, and again, I'd like to thank everyone, especially Councilwoman Betts too, for meeting with us and going over some additional stuff and helping us with numbers on the budget, and everybody's input. So, we've come up to the proposed budget. I'm hoping by now, everybody's had a chance to look at it and review it, 'cause this is, we're hoping to adopt this tonight. And it does come to be a balanced budget at two million five hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred. However, in order to get to a balanced budget, we did have to, we were a little bit over our net revenue of thirty-eight thousand nine eighty-eight, and we are gonna use FY thirteen assigned funds for patching for roads. We had some money left over for that, that we're gonna use in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred. And then, let's see, we're gonna use some of our unrestricted fund balance, and this is for stormwater infrastructure, of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And this is in light of our anticipation of matching projects with the county for stormwater remediation, also referred to as the rain tax kind of projects that are gonna need to be done. So, and I am tasking the council with coming up ways over this next year of perhaps finding the revenue for this, because it's probably not sustainable to keep taking it out of the fund balance. We weren't really sure at this point what kind of number that's gonna be. I mean, these are pretty good estimates, but the form has not all been worked out. We're working on a, an agreement with the county for a memorandum of understanding, so in light of the fact that we really don't have enough clarity, I thought it was prudent that we didn't, you know, that we just take the fund, the money this year out of the fund balance. But we will, I think, need to come up with a sustainable way to fund that in the out years. And then there was fifteen-five, again, this is use of the unrestricted fund balance for patching and paving of fifteen hundred dollars out of this budget, which brings us to a balanced budget. So, has everybody had a chance to look at the final budget? Any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor, that last item was actually not from unrestricted fund balance, it's use of FY thirteen.
Right, that one was the first one, right? Was that fifteen-five and an additional fifteen hundred?
Oh, I'm sorry, you were talking about the fifteen hundred, not the fifteen-five. My, my bad.
Okay. Alright, so, good. Any other questions? So, it would be important now to get a motion to adopt this budget, is that correct? Yes, and then the tax rate's gonna remain the same. What is it, thirty-three? Thirty-three and a half cents?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, wow, wow, it was a dream back in the day. Thirty-five even is your tax rate, so at thirty-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. So, we didn't raise the taxes, Chris. Chris said, "Don't raise my taxes." So, the tax rate is remaining the same, however, I guess the challenge is gonna be stormwater next year. So, contact your local legislators during this election and talk to them about that. How confident are you on that twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars? You're a little bit closer to the negotiations than us. I was just, has anything moved forward since the memorandum of intent? No, I mean, they're still working on kinda, and, you know, we're gonna be doing that, that tour of some stormwater projects and things, and, you know, I mean, we're hopeful that it's gonna, it's gonna work out to kinda what they had anticipated, or perhaps an eighty, twenty sharing arrangement, eighty percent from the county, twenty percent from the towns is, is what's been talked about, but again, that's not finalized, so, you know, I hate to even throw that number out there until things are finalized, you know? So, we're hopeful that we can work out of an equitable arrangement. I honestly don't see any way how the towns could do these things on theirselves, on their own, with, you know, the types of.
Right, in a way.
Things that are involved in doing these projects, and the equipment, the money, just the, so, working with them is definitely, I think, our best course of action. So, I'm optimistic about it at this point. I think they agree that it's, it makes sense for everybody to be working together too. Did you have a question, Chris?
Two things. One, because you still had a public hearing open from last meeting.
Right.
And as.
Thank you.
And would you open a public hearing up like this?
Right, thank you for that.
Motion to open up for public comment.
Yes, great. A second?
I don't think we need a motion.
We're still open from last meeting.
Well, he meant the comments for tonight. So, we'll open it up now, I'll stop talking. This is the public's opportunity for the budget.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if you could just explain what the capital improvements are, for instance, you set capital outlay of townhouse, but I wasn't here for the details enough. Just explain what mixed up the various capital reserves on page twelve.
So, the twelve thousand dollar number from the townhouse? I think, I think we were talking about doing some of the floor resurfacing, correct? Is that where we had some of that?
Yeah, oh, thank you, Linda. Yes, let's do it. Thank you.
For the townhouse, the town website, ten thousand dollars. For the wood floor refinishing, two thousand dollars. That was, we're hoping maybe to do one room or two rooms at a time as we get forward. Public works, street patching and paving, that came to one hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Street sweeper, seven thousand. Replacement of a dump truck, for seventy-five. Parks and recreation, Lexington running park. Main park fully accessible, nine thousand dollars. And the site improvements for the historic Haller Schoolhouse is five thousand dollars for the site improvements.
It's, it's for the whole project, but we didn't, when we set aside money, we did it for the construction, but we didn't include engineering, so we wanted to make sure we had enough.
Question about the dump truck replacements, this is the time to ask something about that.
Sure.
I read a little bit online, it said it had around a hundred thousand miles on it. It being an F-four-fifty dump truck, they have heavier everything, heavier suspension, differentials, the whole nine yards. And to me, for what we use in trucks is for to justify the extra cost of a four-fifty over say an F-three-fifty, is longevity of the vehicle and the life of it. And I just see, the vehicle may be old in years, but if we maintain all our vehicles and take care of them, I don't see why something like that can't last another hundred thousand miles, especially with it being a diesel, and they're known for lasting long haul. If we're servicing them like we're supposed to, which I'm sure we're, maybe the over-servicing, which is, you know, somewhat acceptable, I don't see the need basically for replacement, you know, versus like I read there was a hole in the cab, but you can get that fixed at a body shop for less than seventy thousand. It's just that old.
Yeah, it's, well, what our experience has been is, is we get to this critical point, and you bring up a great point, 'cause we've done this in the past, where we're thinking, you know what, we can keep this going just a little bit longer. And then, the transmission goes out and it's thirty-eight hundred dollars, and then we put the transmission in it, and then a year later, we replace the truck, and it just kills me to keep doing stuff like that, but.
To me, I look at something like, you know, thirty-eight hundred dollars is nothing compared to a full replacement of a truck, you know?
But it is when you dump it out. What usually happens, it, it's right before we sell it, and then we'll, we'll surplus it for four hundred bucks, and I'm like, great, the guy bought our truck or whatever, 'cause now it's not running, we put thirty-eight hundred dollars in it, and it just frustrates me. Like, we've done that before a couple times, where it's like, God, you know, why don't we just replace that thing last year and it would've been a thirty-eight hundred dollar discount, you know what I mean, all of the, so, we really do trust Ron, the Public Works guy, and a lot of the factors that you, you know, you gotta.
I came from, I have a dealership background, it's the only reason I'd speak up on this, I have experience fixing these trucks.
Right, and I'm with you, and I mean, but the concerns that come up that's different, I guess, from just normal business uses, you know, the fact that you got multitude of drivers, you know, so, a lot of times, a lot of different drivers, a lot of different vehicles, you know, we're pushing snow with them all the time, they get a heavy amount of usage from a lot of different drivers, and then the safety.
But they're built for that, though.
I got it.
Not like going out there in a Subaru.
But it's not like one guy having a truck, an F-four-fifty. If I got an F-four-fifty at a diesel with a hundred thousand miles on it, I'm just like you, I'm thinking, you know what, this truck's gonna last, I'm gonna keep it, but.
Well, dealer, a lot of dealers rate those at four hundred thousand minimum.
Yeah. Well, then hopefully, we should get a fat trade in, Ron. So, if it's as good as, but, but I really, we trust him, the Public Works guy, to make a good assessment of this. This has come up a couple of times.
Does he have a mechanical background?
Well, yeah, he's been dealing with this stuff for a long time on all of our. No, I mean, they were, they fix, they fix all of our stuff. They keep stuff running as much as possible. I mean, if it's major service stuff, sure, we have to take it out to a service guy, but they do a good job of fixing and keeping stuff running. And, and believe me, Ron is very conservative. I mean, he's, he's been known to push stuff further than, than it should, you know? I mean, I trusted his judgment, so, and this thing has come up a couple of times in the past, and, and he's like, you know, I think I can get more time out of it, I think I can get it to last, you know, I think we can get another year out of it, and really extended it. So, I mean, I'm, I'm confident that we're kinda at that point of, we're getting ready to chase good money after bad, if I not.
What about, what about even like keeping the truck, taking that seventy thousand dollars, putting it in a bank, letting it accrue interest, and letting it make money?
Interest is nothing right now. You can't invest it. Our town's not allowed to invest the money, so you can't put like, put it in the stock market, so you're talking less than one percent.
Even us just holding, just not spending that money doesn't do anything even where it's sitting at the moment?
You, you can't, you would lose money on, yeah.
I, I just look at it, if, if it's not broken, why replace it? Why not wait for something to break instead of stipulate?
Well, then, then when it's.
And then go get the truck.
'Cause it's twelve inches of snow out, and then you're flipping out, 'cause nobody's getting their snow, and they're like, well, we didn't replace the truck, let you, so then we run into that problem, and people, good night. So, I'm thinking, you know, we've had some harsh winter this year especially, which was really hard on, on a lot of the equipment, and I think it's, you know, I know it sounds good, and we, you know, but then we buy them on contracts, we have to get them outfitted with the plow, we gotta get things set up, you know, so that they can use the truck. So, it's, it, you can't just like kinda wait and then run down to the dealership when there's fifteen inches of snow and try to get an F-four-fifty outfitted for it down. You know, they're done on contracts, and so there's a whole lot of things that go into it.
Does that one truck?
No, we have a couple, but there's not too many bigger ones, like the four-fifty's a bigger truck.
Four-fifty's the smallest truck in the three.
So, is that, is that a smaller one?
That's, that's just the ones that look like a regular four-fifty.
Right.
I mean, we have, I know we have a few of those, and we also have the big red truck.
Right.
I mean, I understand the variable of one breaking down in the wintertime, but, I mean, like, like I said, if you're servicing it, the miles that we're replacing this stuff at is not, from a public standpoint, is not very economical. I just look at it from a town, a town standpoint of us.
Well, I think you gotta look at the whole situation. I think that's what Ron's doing too. He's looking at the age of the equipment, he's looking at how bad it's worn out. The safety of it is another issue I wanted to mention too. So, when you start to get things that are, you know, safety issues, you know.
Well, if you're maintaining it, there should be no safety issue.
Well, if you got a hole in the cab, of course, like you said.
Well, like I said, you guys, you can fix that at a body shop.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna have to defer to him, 'cause I trust him, but Dick, did you have a comment on it?
I was gonna say, any activity that's running a fleet of vehicles, with waste cars, rail trucks, has some form of replacement schedule, which I think we do, and in areas where you're making longer runs, miles are a really good indicator of how much time left on the vehicle. But where do you have a small time with making short runs in the main, the age is gonna be more of a criteria. And when you have the vehicle, however low you maintain it, if it's rusting out of from under you, you're not gonna graft it and, and increase safety by putting patches wherever you can. So, whatever schedule that we're on, we short service anything. And I agree with you, having lived for ten years, which is longer than some, but Ron is the guy. He knows what he's doing.
And he's very good at taking duct tape and making it last as much as possible, so in this situation, I'm with the mayor on it. But I understand your point, ideally, you'd like to take it longer.
Right, and he says the body on the rust is rusted too, so I don't know, and that was probably his question, I think.
I'll, I'll leave the subject, but I mean, even if you had to replace the cab, you're not talking very much money to pick up, to replace the cab.
Right. Sometimes you just start chasing good money after bad, and I think that's kinda where we're trying to avoid that, yeah.
And the, I was gonna consider with that is that is one of our main saw trucks, correct?
Yeah.
And in fact, we don't have a pole shed to store the trucks throughout the elements.
No pole shed, huh? Maybe. Almost got the pole shed.
Maybe.
It's this close.
Chris, we were this close this year. That's been one of, counsel, former Councilman Tru's.
Right, but, but, you know, again, I've been there. We've seen this time and time again, where we tried to do exactly what you're saying and got burned by it. So, I think we're a little, we're a little tired of like.
Yeah, actually, if you, if you look at our debt service, we're still paying for a two-hundred-and-ten charger for a police car, and I believe that's what had, you know, oh-seven, oh-eight, we tried to extend the life of the police cars, and it just became an issue, and we had actually had to take a loan out. So, I'm, my opinion is, we have the money right now, it's up for replacement. I mean, I don't wanna see the town going into debt anymore. Let's just do it, so. I understand your concerns, but.
Honestly, never heard that.
No, absolutely, I definitely.
But it is, the twenty-ten charger is listed right in the debt service in the budget, so we're still paying for that, which would rather pay.
Now, I guess my next question is, do you, do you guys follow dealer recommended service intervals, or do you do any, do a different service interval? Like, do you do a jiffy lube oil change, or do you do a dealer recommended?
No, I think, I think, I think we follow regular service intervals, I mean.
Jiffy lube is three thousand, a dealer, some are five, and some are ten thousand mile oil changes, and are you using synthetic, or using regular fluids?
I don't know all those details, but.
I'm pretty sure we're not following jiffy lubes recommended. But I can check to find out what, who sets our schedule.
Right, but I know, I do see regular invoices as the mayor coming through with maintenance schedules on the trucks.
Well, I just feel like, well, like indicators, these cars were designed not only to save the consumer money, but also to save the environment as far as reduction in oil waste and whatnot.
Right.
Whoever's putting the sticker in the car puts three thousand miles on it, you guys don't, don't know, and it, you know, they just look at us at these oil changes, take it down there. You know, I mean, I'll never say too many oil changes is bad, but it defeats the purpose of, you know, the economics and the environmental impact of.
Right. Ron, again, I think Ron does a good job at maintaining his own schedule. I don't think he's following their, you know, he's probably following a hybrid of, of some of the manufacturer's guidelines based on used-to guidelines, so. But, any other public?
Just a question. How do citizens get a copy of the budget? How come we in the town get a copy of it?
Right on, right on.
It's on the website.
And on the website, yep.
It's also on the website.
Right. So, year-round, you can go on the website and kinda see it as the budget process is coming up. We usually put the drafts out too while we're working on it, you know, for next year, you know, so.
And if you'd like to be notified when things like that get posted, you can sign up for the town's news flash, and then.
Do that. That's just a good thing. So, we'll tell everybody now, since we're on TV tonight too, sign up for the town news flash, because.
It amazes me, how many citizens complain, and where are they?
They're out there.
I can't believe that I come to a meeting in Sykesville with how many people in this town, or thousands some, and you've got how many.
This is a crowd.
Yeah, this is actually a crowd.
And you talk about bike starts staying together. We have thousands at conferences and thousands at, at our meetings and things. And you come to a town like this, where they love their town, and they really care about what happens here, and they bitch and moan on, on, on email and on Facebook, but I don't see anybody here.
We're gonna take that as doing a good job.
I'd like to tell them, you know, what is your problem?
We're assuming that they, they think the mayor's doing a good job, so.
Okay, so any more? Okay, so, I'll say that out loud. So, to sign up for the news flash, go to, sign up, send an email to town@Sykesville.net. So, sign up for the news flash, 'cause you do get a lot of great information. We do put out emergency information on there sometimes, and then just general updates sometimes. We try not to bombard you with, with stuff, so usually it's pretty important, good stuff.
Get the agenda for the town council meetings.
Right, get the agenda, and then it.
All sorts of interesting things, right?
Important stuff. It's a good, good thing. And if there's a cancellation of an event, we usually send that out, so it's always a good thing to have, so. Any more public comments on the budget?
Motion to close public comment.
Okay, so, this time, we're gonna, there's a motion to close the public session on the budget, if there are no more public comments. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the public hearing on the fiscal twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen budget and tax rate is closed. Any more council comments on the budget?
No.
Adopt said budget? That is, they need a motion to adopt the budget?
Motion to approve ordinance number two-eight-seven fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen budget and tax rates for the town of Sykesville, Maryland.
Turn to the second.
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The budget has passed. A lot of work went into that, so.
Nice job.
Thank you, everybody, for that too. Linda, Dawn.
Linda, good job.
Everybody of getting the budget together, it's, it's always a lot of work and a challenge. So, all right, our next item is the approval of the FY twenty-fourteen mid-year budget amendments. Dawn, are you going to comment on that?
We have discussed these at the last two meetings, so I don't really have anything more to say.
Okay.
Unless there's any questions about them.
Questions, comments?
Do we leave it open for public comments just one more time? Is that the purpose?
There was no public hearing, Sophie. You want to see if there's any public comments?
Any public comments on the budget, FY twenty-fourteen budget adjustments? So are we ready to approve these, or do you need these approved tonight?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we do need these approved tonight.
It's a motion to approve the FY twenty-fourteen budget amendments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The FY twenty-fourteen mid-year budget adjustments are approved. Okay, so our next item is the resolution for participation in the employees' reform contributory pension system of the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System. This is some more information for you, right?
Um, sure. So the, there's two steps to joining the retirement system, which, and we've been having this conversation for a while, but one step is that employees, we need to have at least sixty percent of employees who support joining the system. And we had that election, let's see, a week ago or so, May second, and we had actually ninety-seven percent of employees in favor of joining the system, so it's a very solid support. And the second step is for the mayor and council to pass a resolution that expresses the town's intent or desire to join the system. And so that's what's before you tonight. Just to note that because of previous efforts to join the retirement system, this resolution says that the town will enter with seventy-five percent of service credit for employees. And my understanding is that our intent is to go to the legislature and ask for the law to be changed for a hundred percent retroactive to July one, twenty-fourteen, next legislative session. But for now, we have to start where, where the state law has us. Understood.
Any questions in regards to?
When can we request the increase from seventy-five to a hundred? When is the timeframe?
It's during the legislative assembly, because they have to change the law.
For twenty-fifteen, so the next legislative session. And these are typically courtesy-type amendments, so they'll typically approve them based on the recommendation of your delegate. I mean, it's a kind of a courtesy thing, it's not something that goes up as a battle usually, like-
And frankly, we already got the harder part agreed upon. To go to seventy-five percent is very unusual, but to go to a hundred percent will probably be easier.
Any other questions?
No.
Any public comments on this? Dick?
How would acceptance into this particular fund increase town costs? And how would it increase employee costs?
So one of the, sort of, I'll work from maybe the bigger picture to the more specific. One of the concerns that we have is that we have a lot of employee turnover, and we're the only town in Carroll County that is not part of a retirement system. So every time we have this sort of turnover, that costs the town money, because then we have to replace employees. So we're hoping by having this in place, we will reduce that cost to the town and have a more stable services to the public. So that's the big picture of how we think it will help. In more of the nuts and bolts, the town right now provides a retirement system for employees, it's just a different system. So we'll be paying a comparable amount, although it can fluctuate based on the, the return of the retirement fund. But the town will put in a comparable amount. Employees, though, will be also putting in seven percent of their salaries into this on top of what the town is putting in. So it's really going to cost the employees more, but they were all aware of that when they voted, and they still, ninety-seven percent supported joining the system.
Any other?
Now, is the turnover right now because they don't have good retirement, or is it due to other factors?
There's probably a mixture of factors, but in terms of, for example, the police department, the turnover has been tracked, and everybody that's left has gone to a police department that's had a retirement system, so. And it's been noted as a, yeah, as a pension system as opposed to just a retirement program. So it's a factor that's come up several times. I know we lost a longtime employee this year from Public Works, and it was due to us not having a pension retirement system.
Any additional questions? So, and I think, again, just to comment on that, we have had lots of discussion about this over a period of actually several years.
I joined the council seven years ago.
Yes, so it's been going on, going for quite some time. Actually, the, the numbers have lined up better now due to the fact that we don't have some of the long-term employee costs that we would have had, because some of those people that have been here a tremendous amount of time have left, and that has, you know, made it actually a more favorable situation for us to join now, and it has been tremendous for the police department, you know, to try to get officers and retain them. And I mean, you can understand it, we're surrounded by some of the wealthiest counties in the area who are offering, you know, these, the LEOPS, you know, which is a very generous pension system. The municipal pension system, which we found out is funded at, at like eighty-five percent, which is very good. So it's separate in itself from the state pension system, and it's, it's funded very well. It's funded by the municipality, so it's, it is, while it's part of the state system, it's a separate entity, and those funds are not mixed. So I was actually very happy to find that out, you know, that it is, it is a state system, but it operates on its own. And I think that brings peace of mind to these employees too for the long term, because we want them to come and stay, and, you know, they're thinking, hey, I can stay and retire. And it's something they can build on too. So if they go somewhere in the state, they're vested after ten years, you know, and they can carry that on. So it gives incentive for younger officers to stay longer, knowing that if eventually they do get an opportunity, they can kind of take that with them, rather than saying, I got to jump ship now and start getting vested with some other department. So I think it helps them a lot. And the Public Works guys, the guys that can least afford the contribution, but they're most need maybe a defined benefit down the road, so.
Okay, so we're in agreement.
Great.
I'm going to make the motion. Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-fourteen dash oh-three, approving the participation of the town of Sykesville, sorry, I'm here.
It's okay.
And the employees' pension system, reform contributory pension benefit of the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System with a purchase of seventy-five percent of prior service credit effective July one, twenty-fourteen.
Tag it.
Second.
You know, second to do. All those in favor, or Leo, did you get it?
No.
Okay.
I'm just messing with you, go ahead.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Wow, seven years.
That's a big step.
It took them seven years.
And the newbie gets to make the motion.
Okay, so just going through some of my other budget documents here to find more details.
Shouldn't we use a different pen for each letter? Is that how that goes? Thanks.
Good for the budget stuff, you see.
Thanks, Liam.
Okay, so we've done number six. We're making progress.
When you get a chance.
Okay, so I think, actually, I think that is all, it's in the open session, correct?
Yeah. Because we helped around. Number seven.
We've taken that off.
We're going to defer that.
We're going to defer that until we get some more information.
Okay.
And then, but we are going to have a brief closed session, so I don't think we'll be, will we be voting on anything?
No.
No, yes. Or we are?
We might be voting on something, so if any of the public wants to remain for that, the meeting was, is proposed to be closed pursuant to the state government article of the annotated Code of Maryland, section ten dash five oh eight A, to discuss one, I, the employment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline, devotion, compensation, removal, designation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, and two, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So tonight, we have one personnel, employee appointment, and confidential personal information. Other than that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On item number seven, can you make, just state out loud that that item number is being deferred?
Oh, okay, I do apologize, right. So number seven, we did have another item on the agenda tonight, but some additional information needed to be gathered. So it was an update of the master pan and zoning ordinance for the Warfield complex. So we will be deferring that until we get a little more info as required to, before we can move forward with that. So probably be on next meeting's agenda. So that was, that was it for that, so.
Motion for a ten-minute recess.
Five minutes, right?
Well, they take ten minutes to get the cameras out.
Ten minutes, because we got cameras tonight. Okay, so we're going to take a ten-minute recess, and we're going to go to closed session. Anyone who wants to hang around for the-
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ten-minute recess.
Good.
Sorry. John Mayor.
Thanks for keeping it going, I love it.
Absolutely. Absolutely.